The whole, yeah.
The whole public, yes.
Yes, thank you, thank you for your offer. Any other members of the public? Okay. So I'm gonna bring it back to council and again, like I said in the very beginning, this does need more discussion and I believe that council and staff and the consultant needs to have a study session. In 2009, we spent hours and hours and hours of public meetings going through the NBS cost allocation study. So I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to our August 7 study session.
I had a couple comments I'd like to make.
Oh darn it, darn it, I thought I was gonna slam that one through Jerry. Yes, of course.
Question as to what is the basis for the cost estimates? Was it last year's budget that was used for the cost estimates?
Which cost estimates?
Right, in the cost models that were used here, the costs were used-
For service.
For services, was that last year's budgeted?
It was last year's, go ahead.
I'm going a bit off memory, but I believe it was actually this year's budget.
I've got a different answer from staff, that's why I raised the question.
When you say this year, you mean-
FY13, 14, or 1213?
Just approved by-
1213.
1213.
Okay, alright.
So it's last year's, last year's.
Cause we just, actually it's this year.
Well, yeah.
So I don't know what extent that may be looked at. One of the things that I felt was, you know, I think, I think the report describing the methodology and so forth was good. One of the disconnects, I felt that in the overall presentation for the council here was that their, the disconnect is to how staff arrived at the decisions or recommendations they arrived at. There's no discussion of the logic used to arrive at these decisions. One of the reasons that maybe that certain parts of the tasks staff felt shouldn't be charged were things like, last time around, we talked about the planning department's time that they spend on educating the public should not be charged for. So there needs to be a clear bridge between, okay, here's the costs and so forth and here's staff's recommendations. What is the logic they use? Because I think that there are policy implications in terms of that. And so I would suggest between now and August that maybe that'd be something for you to look at and try to provide some more information on. You had a slide tonight, this slide here that showed the recommendations, that was a comment I was gonna make, is that there are recommendations throughout the report, they're either explicit or implicit, and it sure would be nice to have all those in one place rather than having to go through and say, oh, look, there's a recommendation there and there's a recommendation there. So maybe, maybe if there are any others that need to be added to this, you might wanna think about doing that. And there's a comment made about, we also note that calculated productivity hourly rates that we compiled are lower than in another Bay Area city. I didn't know what that meant.
I've got actually, as I mentioned, I'm just wanting to finish up a similar project on the other side of the bay. Actually, the last year I finished up two cities on the other side of the bay and their productive hourly rates are all substantially higher than ours.
The, I guess the final comment I'll make is the one about the council setting recovery rate targets. And I'm not certain how the council would do that, just picking a percentage kind of a thing. I can see how they might, might arrive at a recovery target, or arrive at a recovery rate based upon what policies and decisions it makes to not charge for certain tasks. So if there, if there, if you have information as to what other towns do on that, or you know, how they approach it, or if anything might be useful to council on that whole subject, I would suggest-
I wish there was a lot of evidence that, of thoughtful-
Yeah.
Thoughtful analysis in that respect.
Women arts and science.
Most of what I see that might, might pass as art. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, now may I make my mention?
My last links.
I know, I know, I didn't see that. You were very well prepared. But I would like, and you're not gonna, but you can come back as a member of the public in August, okay? And ask probing questions. So I would like, I'm making a motion to continue this item to our study session on August 7 with staff and the consultant so we can further delve into this and look at the policy issues. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, thank you very much and thank you for coming and making these presentations you did. So our next item is item number 21. As it was announced earlier this evening that as of 6:00 PM tonight, Vice Mayor resigned his position as Vice Mayor and he had, I guess, given the city manager his letter of resignation earlier.
I received a notification from former Vice Mayor Carlson on June 10 that he would be resigning from the post of Vice Mayor at 6:00 PM on June 19, which preceded this council meeting. So in order to facilitate the selection of a replacement of Vice Mayor, staff agendized this item for action by the council this evening.
Okay, so-
And that, that letter was forwarded to the city clerk?
And that letter was forwarded to the city clerk, so it's part of the public record. And does the city attorney have any opinion about this and the filling of this vacancy of Vice Mayor at this time?
Totally up to the council. There, the city code says that, municipal code says that you can have a mayor and a Vice Mayor elected by the rest of the council and obviously it doesn't talk about it, but if that person resigns the position for any reason, I mean, somebody could resign it because of conflict with, conflict with work schedules and things like that, then the city council obviously has the ability to appoint some other member to fill that position.
Okay.
For you?
For the term.
For the term. Well, no, it doesn't say that. It says for one year. It says the term will be for one year.
One year.
It says in our-
And not the reorganization time?
It doesn't say when the reorganization happens. It says that the appointment will be for one year. I looked it up this afternoon.
In our-
In our ordinances that are online.
The rules of procedure and stuff.
In our ordinances that are online.
That's correct. The appointments are for one year, but just like filling a council vacancy, any vacancy, it's for the remainder of that appointment. You only make one appointment per year for mayor, one appointment for Vice Mayor, and if anybody resigns, you fill the remainder of the term.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding of it.
I have a comment.
Yes, yes, as you may.
I do not think this is an appropriate item for this council. I think this should be postponed to the next council meeting. This item was put on the agenda by our city manager, which puzzles me because this is a council issue and I think, you know, if it was gonna be on the agenda, it should be put on by, by the mayor. But also, I believe that, I know it's all legal, but I believe that it's not appropriate. Much as I think of all the good things that council member Carlson has done, I don't think it's appropriate for council member Carlson to be boarding on the future mayor when he's leaving actually, at the end of this month. So I'm just saying, I am, I think this should be postponed to the next council meeting.
Any other council member have a comment?
Well, a similar comment. You know, I think that voting for, before we have the new council member appointed or elected or whatever the situation's gonna be, you know, during our reorganization, we try and get the, we get the council seated and the people that will then live with those decisions actually make the decision. You know, if we don't believe that that's the case, then what we should do in November, we should make the decisions and vote. You know, the people that are outgoing council members should select who the incoming council members should have as mayor and Vice Mayor. We don't have it that way and there's a reason for it. So the cohesiveness and the teamwork associated with the council should be associated with, with the people that are gonna be there. I feel strongly on it and I'll tell you, if you choose to continue on and have a vote on it, I'm not going to vote because I think it's inappropriate and I think it sends the wrong message.
Any other members of the council?
Well, I guess I don't agree with my colleagues. I think that the, under any other circumstances where it wouldn't be a matter of my moving out of town and setting a date so you could set election, or have time to set an election or appoint somebody. I just don't see the, buy the arguments that I've heard so far as to not going ahead and taking some action on this. I would like to see the, see it proceed and a, you call it interim, or what do you wanna call it, to fill out the remainder of the term. You need to have, I think, a Vice Mayor in case the mayor for some reason can't carry out the duties of the office and that's the reason why we have a Vice Mayor. And I think that it'd be better to settle it now rather than if there's some reason why the Vice Mayor couldn't fulfill the office, then there would be even more chaos, I think, in trying to decide what to do at that point in time.
So I believe that with the resignation of Jerry Carlson and the Vice Mayorship, that it is important for the council to begin functioning as quickly as possible as a full council. We don't know whether or not we're going to appoint someone or have an election in November. And to wait until November to, or December actually, then to reorganize the council with the mayor and the Vice Mayor, that would be way too long to be operating without a Vice Mayor. I think that the city manager did exactly the appropriate thing in keeping the town operating and managing the town by receiving the letter and giving it to the city clerk and then putting this on the agenda for action. And so based on that, I can open the floor up for any public comments on this to hear from any member of the public before bringing it back to council for action. Seeing no public comment, I would like to, at this point, open the floor for nominations to fill the position of Vice Mayor.
I would like to nominate Kerry Weist.
There's a motion on the floor to nominate Kerry Weist as Vice Mayor. Do I hear a second? I'll second that motion. Any discussion? I'd like to call for the vote for electing Kerry Weist as Vice Mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yes, opposed.
Thank you.
I'm abstaining as I stated.
So we have three ayes, one opposed, and one abstention. We have, you said-
Well, it's abstained because like, you can't say no vote, we don't ask for that. But I said I wouldn't vote on it.
We do ask for a no vote. You either-
No, 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 I didn't say no. I said I would not vote on this, so that was-
You're correct, Mayor, it was three, one, one. Three, four, one against, one abstention.
That's what I said, abstention. Right. Okay. Okay, so-
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that, I should've clarified, and the term of this Vice Mayorship is until December when we reorganize the council.
Completely understood.
And every December, right? Okay.
Completely understood.
Great, thank you.
Technically, it's until the new mayor and Vice Mayor are appointed because, you know, you could have an earthquake or something, so rather than fix the end of it, it's until the, it is supposed to be in December, but I think it'd be appropriate to say for the remainder of council member Carlson's term. Cause that could be, could be-
Term as Vice Mayor.
Term as Vice Mayor.
Term as Vice Mayor, right, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to-
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure we're all technically able on this. Okay, so moving on to item number 22, which is following on the council member Carlson's resignation. He's really, you know, created a lot of extra work for us at this point, you know? I'm gonna regret my proclamation, but, so I'll let our city manager give his staff report and then outline our options in front of us for the process of filling the city council vacancy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you know, council member Carlson's resignation is effective July 1st, 2013. Per the California Government Code, following that effective date of the resignation, the council has 60 days to either fill the vacancy by appointment or fill the vacancy by calling a special election for the next regularly scheduled collection date, not less than 114 days from the call of the special election. With that in mind, the council's options are the following. One, independently as a council, discuss and agree on a candidate to appoint and appoint a candidate to fill the unexpired term. If this is the council's option to pursue, the council has 60 days within which to make the decision and act on the appointment, and appointment decision cannot be made prior to July 1st. Option two, host an open house and invite candidates to participate with resumes, conduct interviews, and within that same 60 days of July 1st, appoint the candidate to fulfill the unexpired term. If this is the council's option to pursue, the council could schedule an open house, advertise and invite candidates to come with resumes for interviews and discuss and agree upon a candidate to appoint. The council has 60 days from July 1st to do that. A candidate, a decision cannot be made prior to July 1. However, the council could advertise for and host an open house prior to that date and council member Carlson wouldn't participate in that particular open house. Option three is discuss and decide to hold a special election to fill the unexpired term. In order to consolidate the special election with the November election, the council would have to decide and call that election by July 12th. The candidate nomination period would then begin July 16th and the council cannot call for that special election prior to July 1st. If it is the council's desire to hold the open house, review candidates and then decide whether to call the election and appoint, it must do all of these things prior to July 12th. That concludes us.
We really, I have a calendar problem, I think.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if you do nothing, the next general election is June 3rd of 2014.
If we do nothing, if we, if we miss the July 12th date to decide to hold the special election in November?
If you miss that deadline, then there are two deadlines that come into play. First of all, the 60 days is, it takes you from July 1st out to September 1st. If you have made no appointment by September 1st, then automatically, there's an election, a special election has to be called for the next general election date that's more than 114 days away, which becomes June 3rd of 2014.
And then the remainder of his term would be just until November 7th, 2014?
And there, yes, and there would be nobody filling the seat in the interim.
Okay. So, okay. Let's discuss this. I just wanted to make clear and that I understand that this is for discussion purposes only. We are not making any decisions at this time because council member Carlson is still a member of the council, but he cannot participate in any decision-making of this process. He can talk about it, but he can't make any-
He can, I don't know.
I, it would probably be a cleaner procedure. He certainly can sit here and he certainly can take it all in and answer a question if somebody asks him, but I think it would be more appropriate for the people that are going to be making the decision to communicate with themselves.
And you can direct staff to hold that open house.
Okay.
Schedule the open house if you wanted to.
So I thought we were gonna have this discussion on the 3rd. I know that you said that you were just gonna go over, you know, to get us thinking about it, but actually-
July 3rd.
July 3rd is the, is the study session where we were actually gonna discuss this in earnest.
The rationale for putting it on tonight's agenda for the council's discussion was if you wait until July 3rd, you kinda, you close out the option for an open house because you're running over the July 4th weekend, your July 12th deadline is fast approaching and you're down to like four days to advertise, publish, notice the community that you're gonna have an open house, get the candidates in here, interview them and then go on. So I kinda gave you the option tonight even though-
But there's the open house and then there's also the, just an appointment, right?
Right.
Correct. You're gonna have the open house.
We wouldn't have to have, you know, we'd have to have a meeting to make an appointment, but we wouldn't have to have an open house where everybody comes for 15 minutes and makes their-
You don't have to do that.
We do not need any open house. All that's required is that the-
Council would agree.
Council appoint somebody by a majority vote.
Yeah, this is usually the option.
I would like to, by a majority vote or by a unanimous vote?
Majority vote.
Can we change that to make it a unanimous vote? So that if all four of us wanted to just appoint somebody, that we all four agree, I mean, wouldn't it be awkward?
I would think a majority vote is okay.
What if you were the one man who was the one man out? Wouldn't you feel weird about that?
Madam Mayor, I think we're stuck with the law.
Those meetings all the time.
I think we're stuck with the law. In order, in order to get a majority vote, you're gonna have to have these three people. At that point in time, it might be fairly easy to get a consensus, but technically the law is pretty clear, although it's really technical and it's sort of strange with all these dates and times and places. It basically says that you can, by a majority vote, appoint somebody to take the position, so, to fill out the rest of the term.
Well, we do have a tricky calendar situation because this is, if we decide to host an open house and throw it open to all members of the community to participate with resumes, I would think that that open house could be held on July 3rd, but is there time between today, June 19th, or tomorrow, June 20th to advertise, you know, get the word out, get people's interest to come to a July 4th meeting to present their desires to serve?
Well, and I don't want to preclude that we would make an appointment or that there may be somebody here who, in the community who would come out and, and get our interest. I think asking them to do it on July 3rd, we've all said that July 3rd is kind of a difficult time while people are going out of town. You know, I think that the expedient thing would be if we could consider doing an appointment, but, but there could be a problem. In my mind, you know, if you say you go down one road, there is always the risk that you're not gonna get somebody who you want. Or, you know, I don't know who the candidates might be who would be considered for appointments, I guess, you know, we'd have to discuss that in July 3rd. So, so it's kinda, you know, it's, I realize it's a rock and a hard place situation and it'd be nice if we could get an election there, maybe in the middle, but we'd miss a window. But not knowing who's available, who would be available, things like that, I think it would be a problem, but I also think that expecting people to show up on, on the 3rd might be difficult because it is the day, it's the evening, it's a five to seven, if I remember right, it's a five to seven meeting when many people would be going out of town for 4th of July for a five day, four day weekend.
However, you know, I think that we could change the meeting time, cause it hasn't been published, you know, we can call a special meeting on July 2nd if we want, or July 1st, cause I think that July 3rd is a Wednesday, so we do have the ability to do that and not be slammed against the July 3rd, July 4th weekend.
I would rather have it at nine o'clock in the morning.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That would suit me much better.
I would rather not have it nine o'clock in the morning. I wouldn't like to have it at nine o'clock in the morning, I could be in hell in the afternoon. You coughing for me or you're-
A fly is after you, so I'm trying to protect you.
So Kerry, do you wanna say something?
I think I'm probably gonna be a little different. I think that time constraints with an open house and the holidays of 4th of July are gonna be problematic to an open house. My thoughts. I think, you know, for myself, going to an election in November is something I think that, it gives a better defined process for people to get prepared and it takes it away from us and it allows the people of Atherton to subsequently make the choice of who they want in that seat. I'm not saying that the process of appointment doesn't work, cause clearly Jerry's an example of working, but I think that timing wise, summon wise, giving each candidate an opportunity to feel that they have enough time to be prepared and the people out there have an opportunity to engage, see, and so on and so forth. I think that that's something that the residents of Atherton, you know, in my opinion, deserve.
So you really are advocating to just go straight towards the election, just make the decision as soon as we can legally make the decision to hold an open election. I know that in Jerry's situation, and I'm only gonna use you as an example because you're right here and, you know, it's your fault, in 2006, he was appointed in January of 2006, but it was not, he was not the only candidate. There were a number of people who had come forward that the council deliberated about. And so that kinda tells me that if there was an appointment process, that it should be more widely, you know, noticed so that a broader, so that as many people in Atherton who may have a desire, you know, to serve, for, to be appointed rather than go through the campaign-
Right.
Heartache and headache, could have that ability. And then, you know, the council would have some candidates to deliberate. And so how, you know, I think that if, if we could maybe work towards that with the understanding that if nothing was done by July 12th, we'd have to, we would have to make the decision to go to an election. What do you think about that?
You know, as I said, you know, I think that, I think it would be, if there was a candidate out there that we could agree on, it would be expeditious and helpful to have, have that person on the council and have a five-person council.
How would we know what candidate there is?
Well, I don't know, I don't know who else is, you know, I don't know who's available, but-
So would we advertise, would we let people know, or would it be a close circle of friends?
I wouldn't do a close circle of friends. I think that it's been in the papers, that, that it's been in the papers twice that Jerry's retiring. It was in the paper today, or, and it was in the paper when he first announced it a couple of months ago.
But that's different, that's a new story about that, but that's different than saying that the council is going to call for applicants to, for an appointment.
Well, when Jerry was appointed, I think they did, I think they did call for that.
Right, that's what I'm talking about, Jim, that's what I'm talking about, doing.
They did.
Okay, right. And don't you think that's a good idea?
Well, two things. One is, I think we can't make a decision tonight which way we're gonna go.
No, but I'm, yes, right.
But my feeling is that we can call for applicants. That doesn't mean that we have to select any one of them, you know, but there may be one that we think is outstanding and we all agree to select them, him or her, but we may not, in which case it would automatically go to an election.
Can I ask city attorney and city manager to- Can I ask city attorney and city manager to?
Who's listening?
William.
Yes.
Well, I was trying to listen, but I just didn't hear what you were saying. But describe to me the difference between number one and number two, and how those two would vary in, you know?
Sure. Number one was just, you're talking amongst yourselves, much like this evening after July 1st, when you say, you know, hey, we want to appoint.
Bantering names around.
Yeah.
Just bantering names around that come to us, random names.
And you appoint somebody. Option number.
But it doesn't have to be. It could be like your process for appointing people to committees and commissions.
With applications.
You could have people submit applications, and you could then take those applications, and based just on the application, you could vote.
But that's number two.
Number two is have an open house, where the people would have the ability to come before you and say, here are my qualifications, vote for me because.
Much like they did this evening, is your candidate appointment process.
Right.
Yeah.
I still don't know the distinct difference.
The distinct difference is there's somebody in mind, you're starting to banter names around, and all of a sudden you agree on them and say, this is the person we want to appoint. The other option is you have, as has been mentioned, your call for applicants, muscle like committees, those applications come in, you have a meeting, much like you did at 6 o'clock tonight, where the candidates and those applications come in and say, hey, vote for me, and you pick one.
Okay.
Based on a five-minute vote for me.
Right.
Well, or.
Option one is no five-minute vote for me.
Or the resume.
And the resume.
So, okay, so I had already opened this up for public comment.
Have you?
Have I? No, that was the last one.
Yeah.
So if it's okay with council, I'm gonna open it up for public comment, and I think I see some hands.
John Rigerow Stockbridge Abinov, you speak about when Jerry was put in to fill the rest of the term of Carl, Phil Tomlin. Prior to that, Nan Chapman sold their house and moved out when she was mayor, and a few years before that, and they filled it, as I can't quite remember, but I think it was Bob Huber, a former council person, who took the term left over with the premise that he wouldn't run for the office again, and just filled in. Isn't that right, Jerry? Do you remember if that's what it was? That's another way they did it.
Do you know how long the term was left?
I don't remember. Team, I don't.
I think it was about a year.
A year, about a year. Hubers?
A little short of a year, maybe.
Okay, all right.
Who was in there?
All right.
He was a previous council member.
Okay, the previous, okay, okay, that's fine. So another.
Rick Golea Clay Drive, I'm the vice chair of the Civic Senator Advisory Committee. I think that the most important thing for the council is to put out the notice so that you find out who might be interested. So you bring some, you get the best quality people that might be interested in coming forward, rather than just in an election process. I think the idea of doing applications and reviewing those just as you do for commissions is a great way to do it. I think that having an open house would be a good thing. We did that for the CCAC, and that was very effective. I think doing it on July 3rd is problematic because of the vacation, and people are not gonna be around. My recommendation would be to do it early on July 1st, or do it the week after July 4th, before July 12th, because clearly you want to be able to make a decision so that if you can't make, if you don't find somebody you want to choose for the appointment, you can go to the election process and consolidate it for the November election, rather than having a special election. And you don't want to leave the position open if you can avoid that. So, but I think that soliciting for people to give you an application and express interest, and make that as wide as possible so you can see who out there in Atherton might be interested in this, would be the most valuable thing for you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay.
In the interest of the voters, I would suggest that you appoint somebody either way, and not have Atherton wallpapered for 90 days like we did last year. And maybe three years in a row, we'd have wallpapered plus signs. So I would suggest you appoint however you do it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I thought your signs were excellent.
Well, we're gonna.
Gary had more than I did.
They're gonna have the parcel tax signs fall over anyway. Okay, so can we make a decision to maybe direct staff to go out and advertise for applications, so that we could get the ball rolling? I know that the Almanac publishes on Monday, Tuesday next week. I think there's still time to get a display ad in before Friday. Isn't that right, Bini? Can we do that? You don't know. Well, I think Bini's gonna write about this.
Yeah, but I don't know about the ads.
She's nothing that I can't remember.
I don't know what the deadline is.
Well, you know.
If it's the council's desire to do something like that, I would suggest you consider three directions to staff in terms of consensus. One is advertise, just like you would for any committee or commission. Two is direct us to a closing date, when you'd like all those applications backed by, and then if you're going to have some sort of open house or meeting where you're gonna have one like 6 o'clock tonight, where you can review those applications and invite the candidates to come in, direct us as to what date you might want that.
Yeah, and then publish a press release.
Yes.
And send out our email notices.
And we would get the word out as much as we could without sending a letter to every resident at that.
Okay, so can we look at our calendars, maybe? I, July 12th is a Friday. Could we hold our open house meeting on the 10th, Wednesday, the 10th? And would that give us enough time to, number one, well, if we get the applications prior to that date, say by July 8th, have Monday, July 8th be the deadline to get the applications to us? Then we could review them, and then post the open house and make a determination on the 10th?
I can't make it on the 10th.
When can you make it?
I can't make it on the 10th. I can make it on the 9th, I can make it on the.